I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for September 10th, 2018. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the city deputy clerk please call the roll?
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
And Monica Durand excused herself.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilors, before you in your packet, we have the council minutes of August 13th, 2018. If there are no corrections, we will let those stand as presented. And so we see no objections, so we will let those stand as presented. And we have a couple of proclamations today, so I will go to the podium. Mr. Goff, would you join me for one?
So our first proclamation is Colorado Cities and Towns Week. And it reads, "Whereas municipal government is the government closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact on its residents; and whereas municipal governments is administered by and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment and understanding of its many responsibilities; and whereas municipal government officials and employees share the responsibilities to pass along their understanding of public service and their benefits; and whereas Colorado Cities and Towns Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by the municipal government in our lives; whereas the Colorado Municipal League's member cities and towns have joined to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information; and whereas Colorado Cities and Towns Week offers an important opportunity to convey to all citizens of Colorado that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of September 10th through 16th, 2018, as Colorado Cities and Towns Week, and witness thereof on this 10th day of September, 2018." And I'd like to present this to our city manager, Patrick Goff.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And in conjunction with the Cities and Towns Week, we have Truck Tuesday coming tomorrow afternoon at 4:00, right here at City Hall. I hope that all of our residents and neighbors and citizens will come down to City Hall and see our fleet, because we've got some pretty awesome trucks. So if you want to see our trucks, or as my little son used to say, the cucks, because he wasn't quite into his tees. But we'll hope you'll join us tomorrow afternoon at 4:00, so thank you very much. Now, we have Wade Hammond and Annie McKean here. I don't know whether they've made it to our meeting yet, but I want to have another proclamation for Constitution Week. Whereas our rights and liberties are rooted in the cherished documents they gave birth to our nation, those being the United States Constitution with its Bill of Rights, which documents set forth the principles upon which our government is based; and whereas the core principles embodied in the foundational documents that define the United States system of government form a common bond to unite the people of the United States; and whereas, as Americans, we enjoy our freedom and the rule of law through these documents our founding fathers created; and whereas the civic culture that defines the United States can be sustained as long as each generation develops a deep understanding and commitment to the principles of our founding documents, and accordingly, it is vital that every American be educated in the knowledge of our Constitution; and whereas informed citizens are necessary to exercise and exhibit responsible and civic knowledge, which will ensure the preservation of our form of constitutional self-government; and whereas constitutional self-government places a tremendous degree of responsibility and trust upon the citizens who are to govern themselves; and whereas Constitution Day was established to celebrate the United States Constitution with its Bill of Rights; and whereas Constitution Day provides an opportunity for American citizens to reaffirm the achievements of our founding fathers and recommit ourselves to preserving the rights, privileges, and responsibilities our nation's founders secured for themselves and for the posterity of future generations of Americans. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2018, as Constitution Week. And I would like to let you know that I have sponsored a copy of the Constitution for each of our students in Wheat Ridge High School, and those will be delivered to them at no cost, and I hope that they will be able to read those and look through those. They're kind of small books, so I hope they'll kind of stick around with them as they grow up and become strong defenders of that Constitution. So, thank you. Next on the agenda is our citizens' right to speak. And we will start with any item not on the agenda. Thank you. Okay. So that's item number one. That's item number two. And so we have one person signed up to speak, Ms. Dorothy Archer. Would you please come to the podium and give us your name and adjust that microphone so that it's handy for you.
My name is Dorothy Archer, 3640 Marshall Street. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. I have an apology to make. Hopefully, Mr. Slattery is watching this on Channel 8. The last time I spoke, I thanked some staff members and some of the citizens for gathering together and reviewing some possibilities to make some decisions for the zoning issue. Mr. Slattery took the time to draw in perspective the possibilities for every zone and every lot size at 27, 30, and 35 feet. I forgot to bring them, and I forgot to thank him public, publicly. I need to do that. He went way out of his way to do this for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Archer. That was all of the -- I didn't have anyone else signed up to speak, but if you would like to speak, you can come forward now on any item not on the agenda. I don't see anyone. So we will move to approval of the agenda. Do we have any objections from council to the agenda as presented? All right. We will continue on with the agenda as it's presented. And our first order of business will be introduced by Mr. Matthews. If you would introduce item number one.
If I could, please, my computer died. Item number one, Council Bill Number 23-2018, An Ordinance Vacating Any Interest Held by the City of Wheat Ridge in a Portion of Miller Street, a Public Roadway, Adjacent to 5185 Miller Street, Case Number WV-18-01, Rousch Industries. At issue, the applicant has requested approval of a right-of-way vacation for a remnant section of the right-of-way formerly used for Miller Street. The right-of-way section requested for vacation was abandoned as a thoroughfare in the early 2000s when Miller Street was rerouted to the east.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation for this item?
We do. Mr. Zach Wallace will have a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Please proceed whenever you're ready.
Good evening again for the record. Zach Wallace Mendez. I'm a planner with the Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. This is case number WV-1801, A Request for Vacation of a Portion of Right-of-Way Formerly Utilized for Miller Street. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, City Council does have jurisdiction to hear the case. I'd like to start with highlighting the portion of Miller Street that is proposed to be vacated, shown here in light blue. As you can see, Miller Street is a thoroughfare, now kind of jogs around what was formerly Miller Street, which you can kind of see remaining here. Just a bit of a zoomed-out version, Miller Street continues up to the north into Arvada, eventually connects up to 58th Avenue, also connects down to 50th Avenue and the frontage road. And then for context, you can see the portion of Miller Street that is proposed to be vacated still in the blue. For context, there's a 2001 aerial, which shows that the portion was formerly used for the Miller Street thoroughfare, so just a little context there. Some additional context, this is a current photo of the site. You can see the former sidewalk curb gutter, and then what used to be the roadway here, and now the current road position, which jogs around. And that's just another view of their former curb cut into their property from the former Miller Street. This was sent out on referral to ensure emergency response, access and utility maintenance access were maintained. We received referral comments from the following folks. The Public Works Department with the city has requested a drainage and utility easement over the entirety of the portion of Miller Street that is proposed to be vacated. How this works is it's been written into the ordinance where if approved tonight, it will simi -- the ordinance would simultaneously vacate the right-of-way and dedicate that easement as requested by Public Works. The Police Department had no objection, nor did the city of Arvada. Valley Water District did require a 30-foot easement to be granted to the easement, kind of their own exclusive easement. That easement has been recorded, and the staff does have a copy of that, so it's in place already. Arvada Fire had no objections, and Excel Energy also requested an easement, and they were happy with the drainage and utility easement requested by the city was sufficient for their needs. One of the criterion for vacating right-of-way is conformity with the goals and policies of the Transportation Section of the Comprehensive Plan. So here we have an image from that plan. The vacated right-of-way is denoted by, or the section of right-of-way requested for vacation is denoted by this blue star here. As you can see, there's no improvements in that area that the vacation would impact. Also, since the bicycle and pedestrian master plan was recently updated, I thought it would be relevant to bring that up really quick. The dashed blue line indicates proposed on-street bicycle facilities, and this goes on the portion of Miller Street that jogs around this old portion. So the vacation of this right-of-way would have no impact on the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, as it was recently adopted. So with all of that, staff concludes that no future right-of-way needs are present for this section of right-of-way. Vacating this section of right-of-way would not leave adjacent property without access to a public street. This portion of right-of-way would be deeded to the property requesting the right-of-way, Rousch Industries, at 5185 Miller. It is not in conflict with any of the city's adopted plans. It would not negatively impact city infrastructure, and as I noted, all of the requested easements are in place now, or will be with the adoption of the ordinance as requested. So therefore, staff does recommend approval of the request. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is present, but would not like to make a presentation, but he can answer any questions if you'd like.
Is that Josh Velez?
I'm sorry?
What's the applicant's name?
Josh.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So Josh was the only person I had signed up, but he would like to speak only if we have questions, correct? Okay. So we will hold on that, and I will go to questions from council of staff. Then a motion would be, and I hear hearing none, then we will...
Did a public hearing get opened and closed?
No, I don't think it did. So let me -- can I open that?
Open the public hearing to declare that the testimony of staff is to be included.
I hereby open the public hearing, and the presentation by staff is included, and I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 23-2018, An Ordinance Vacating Any Interest Held by the City of Wheat Ridge in a Portion of Miller Street, a Public Roadway, Adjacent to 5185 Miller Street on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication for the following reasons. Number one, the Public Works Department does not foresee any future roadway needs for this right-of-way. Number two, the vacation will not leave adjacent property without access to a public street. Number three, the vacation is not in conflict with the goals and objectives of the Comprehensive Plan or the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. Number four, the vacation will not negatively impact city infrastructure. And number five, easements will ensure the city and outside agencies can adequately access infrastructure located within the vacated right-of-way.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Dozeman. Do we have discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the deputy clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. We will go to item number two. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce item number two?
Yes, thank you. Resolution Number 56-2018, A Resolution Amending the Fiscal Year 2018 II E-Bond Fund Budget to Reflect the Approval of a Supplemental Budget Appropriation in the Amount of $2,129,250 and to Award a Contract and Subsequent Payments to the GH-FIPS Construction Companies in the Amount of $5,69,979 and to Approve a Contingency Amount of $341,560 for the Anderson Park Renovation II E-Bond Project.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation?
We do. Joyce Manwaring, Parks and Rec Director.
Thank you, Ms. Manwaring. Please proceed whenever you're ready.
All right. Thank you. It'll take me a minute to find it here again.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'm pleased tonight and excited to present to you information related to the contract award for one of the II E-Bond projects, the renovation of Anderson Park. The process began with a master plan developed and approved. The II E-Bond funds appropriated for this project are $4,447,708. There is additional funding appropriated from open space funds and the Conservation Trust Fund to meet the project cost. This is the master plan that design development construction drawings were based on, which was approved by council. So the scope of the project and the... Oh, okay. Thank you. So the scope of the project included in the plan that you're seeing on the screen tonight is the rebuilding of these two parking lots, a bus entry, drop-off entry in this area, replacement of the baseball field lights, some renovation of the baseball field itself, a removable fence, and a multipurpose field in the outfield in this area. We have a new performance pavilion, or enhanced picnic pavilion, that'll serve as a performance stage for our concerts in the park. We have one creek access in this area. This creek access is not included in this scope due to the budget constraints. New roof at the Anderson Building, new sidewalks to walk in circular patterns through the park and access the Clear Creek Trail. We also replace the water line, and we'll be replacing the main irrigation system, which is around 50 to 60 years old. There'll be also stormwater improvements, drainage, et cetera. This is a rendering of, a concept rendering of what the improvements to the outside of the building will look like, so it'll have new siding, new windows in the gym, new entryways, circulation for the outdoor pool, new lifeguard room, and a new entry plaza. This is the concept design for the interior of the building, so we'll have a new gym floor, new finishes in the restrooms, new storage in the fitness room, a new renovations to the multipurpose room, so we can have a variety of classes and activities in this space, new storage area, additional storage, all new finishes in the entire building. This is what we call our link area that connects the two buildings. There'll be new finishes and a renovation of this area, new circulation for those trying to use a pool. They now kind of line up outside, et cetera. So this will make that improvement. We'll have a control desk here. And then we have family changing rooms. These two bathhouse, shower, locker rooms will be completely renovated, gutted, and completely renovated with new fixtures, new circulation, ADA accessible showers, et cetera. And then we have a new guard room office area over here, which currently exists in this area. There are no ad alternates included in the contract award at this time, and as I mentioned, one of the two creek access points shown in the master plan is not included due to the budget restrictions, and that's the one on the east side. And then value engineering was completed as part of the process through both design development and schematic to reach our contract award value. So our contract award is to GH-FIPS for $5,69,979. And I do have Martha Nelson, who is part of our pre-construction services team, representing GH-FIPS tonight, and she's here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Before we go to questions, I would like to go to citizen comment on this, and I have two people signed up to speak. Our first one is Raleigh Sorrentino and Dick Orcut on deck. If you would please come to the podium and adjust it so it's comfortable to speak into, and give us your first name and last name, and please spell your last name.
Good evening. My name is Raleigh Sorrentino. I live at 4175 Teller Street, Wheat Ridge, Colorado. Here I am again. Believe me, not by desire. Let's see what happens here. A few months ago, the city council approved a motion to maintain for future the baseball field at Anderson Park. In addition, like frosting and candles on a cake, they included brand-new set of lights for that baseball field to replace the existing lights. I am here tonight as both a tax-paying citizen of Wheat Ridge and a representative of many Wheat Ridge citizens, and also the baseball community who uses that baseball field, to communicate and express to this city council loud and clear, without reservation, just how grateful these people are for saving that baseball field. Gratitude, which words cannot express, comes from the hearts of very many involved in this community. Therefore, thank you very much on behalf of all of us. However, please do not interpret anything else I may have to say or speak about tonight as any detraction or lack of appreciation or respect for that gratitude. A few weeks following that decision about the baseball field at Anderson Park, a letter from this baseball community was submitted to this body and the city staff, which included recommended and requested lighting and illumination levels to be provided as part of the new lighting system. A review of this resolution in front of you tonight, which includes new lights for Anderson Park, indicates that this recommendation and request from the baseball community has apparently fallen on deaf ears. This recommendation did not come out of thin air. It's based upon industry standards and engineering references used by professional engineers in their designs of sport facilities. Who's making the decisions on this new lighting system for the baseball field at Anderson Park? It apparently does not involve Wheat Ridge citizens or knowledgeable persons involved using that field. Look, I am not a developer who comes to this city with a request for tax incentive financing or rezoning to multi-use high-density apartments, condos, or townhomes. Yet I see the city staff roll out the red carpet for these persons, while I, a longtime citizen of Wheat Ridge, have great difficulty obtaining an audience with my own city staff to discuss such matters as the lighting at Anderson Park. I am not here tonight to ask you to vote no on this resolution. I support the new renovation plan for Anderson Park and look forward to its implementation. However, I am here to point my inability to effectively have input to the decision-making process within this city, especially with reference to the new lighting system at Anderson Park. I'm a professional engineer with experience building and lighting ball fields. Ladies and gentlemen, let me point out what this is all about. I would like to pass out something to you.
Yeah. If you'll give that to the clerk, we'll... If you'll give that to the clerk, we'll...
Y'all got one? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let me point out what this is all about. Deep down, buried within the hundreds of pages of specifications for this Anderson Park renovation project is one little box on page two of section 265668 called exterior athletic lighting with two simple little numbers within that box. In effect, 50-foot candles infield and 30-foot candles outfield. Very simply, these numbers should be 70-foot candles infield and 50-foot candles outfield, which is simply one-half step up from recreational lighting, a level of illumination to support competitive baseball play. What this really means is that this city has provided a specification to be used for construction of a new lighting system for Anderson Park Baseball Field, which is not necessarily commensurate with the level of competitive baseball to be encountered in the future on that field, and more importantly, a system that cannot in the future be upgraded. Let me repeat that last part. And more importantly, a system that cannot in the future be upgraded. At the very least, we can amend the specification now before this contract is awarded to include a provision for upgrade in the future to a 70-50 lighting system. This means electrical supply and pole sizing now for future upgrade at a later date. This is not an unreasonable request. If money is a concern, which I'm sure it is, then please don't forget that this baseball field produces an income during its season, a return on investment, if you will. If night games are played, additional income is realized. Therefore, again, I am not here tonight to request that you vote no on this resolution. I am here tonight to respectfully request that this city council consider a motion to postpone a vote on this resolution, 56-218, for two weeks for the purpose of providing us that use this baseball field at Anderson Park an opportunity to present our case for more appropriate lighting than is currently specified as an agenda item on this city's next study session. I submit to you here tonight that this is a just cause. And again, I'd like to emphasize, 70-50 lighting is good, but if you can't do it now, if you saddle this project with what's in the specification now, then it is not able to be upgraded. So maybe there's a middle ground there, provide an infrastructure system that will allow the 50-30 lighting to be put up now with potential to upgrade it to 70-50 at a later date, and you will see what will happen as the lighting levels are installed and need to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Richard Orcut.
Well, as Raleigh said, great to see you guys again. My name is Richard Orcut. I live at 10033 West 30th Avenue in Wheat Ridge. I had prepared some comments, and I only became aware of what Raleigh was going to say when we came in the building. So I've made a couple of notes. I think what I would have said would have been far less impactful than what you just heard. I think what he stated was elegantly stated. I think it speaks for pretty much all of us that have had any part of coming before you over the past many months for our desire to sustain the baseball field and its ongoing presence. I think his report was condensed. I think it was honest. I think it's accurate. I think it's practical. I have spoken with many people who had anything to do with an interest in the ballpark. We all know that there could have been times when we may have flooded with more people. Sometimes we did, and you heard the same story coming at different angles, but condensed pretty much to the same message. I have spoken in the last few days to several of these people about coming tonight, and what I did learn is that most of them assume that this has already been passed and that it's absolutely unmovable at this point in time. New lights on this park to them mean that it's automatically new, which is by definition better, but many of them are interpreting that the lights are going to be improved by their volume, by their ability to make the field a slightly better and more competitively accessible field for a different level of play. I thought about this recently at the Carnation Festival, which, like most of you, I attended both nights for that fabulous fireworks display, as well as everything else, that display that's put on by one of our Wheat Ridge High School graduates who's gone on to be very, very good in his business. And I think that carnation display just cements the value of that park. But had a lot of time to sit, see the park, think again about what we've accomplished or attempted to accomplish over the past few weeks. And it dawned on me that we all get put into positions in our lives where sometimes we have to reassess something, and I cannot thank you enough nor express how much I admire what has happened with this motion and this discussion over these last few weeks and the fact that the council, I think, opened their minds, broadened their views, attacked an issue, and came out with a solution that benefited a broad section of our citizenry, certainly a broader section than maybe would have been had it not been reevaluated on several occasions. I have had to do some decision-making on a reciting of my home, and the contractor a couple of times called me and said, "Dick, insurance isn't going to cover this extra little deal, but it's going to be a lot better for you to make this one little change here or one little change there." I would have liked not to have had to think about that, but when possessed with the alternative of analyzing it, sometimes I felt that the change was practical for the long run. I think that the higher grade of lighting, for those that don't understand, I want to say it as honestly as I can. The level of lighting that is proposed by the professionals for this athletic field will allow it to be used by a broader cross-section of athletes and a higher grade of baseball, specifically collegiate level and the highest level of high school baseball, which can come through here on tournaments or college play to address a safety feature as well as a usable feature. The field is usable by a broad group of people, but at the highest level, it probably will not be suited to attract the usage under the lights at the current level that's been there, and even though if they're new, it's still going to be the same lighting. So my rough figures, if I have them accurate, would suggest that by following Raleigh's suggestion to maintain the flexibility for a future decision to upgrade, even if it's not done now, is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of six-tenths of 1% of the budget that you're approving here. It is not a very big additional expenditure to position this asset, this field, for future decisions by you or those council members that may follow you. And therefore, I think his suggestion is a practical one. I hope you'll consider looking at it for another two weeks to be sure on the final vote that you've analyzed all the facts. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all of the speakers that I have signed up on the list. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Okay, I'm going to open it up for questions from council, and we'll start with Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question is for staff. I know this issue has been percolating out there for some time. Have we inquired at all as to the delta cost on putting in stronger poles and upgrading the electrical?
Not specifically without the new fixtures that go with those to the 70-50 candles. I was quoted around $100,000 to $125,000 to install 70-50 candles to serve collegiate play, baseball. The price on just upgrading the electrical and putting larger poles or whatever is needed, I do not have that delta. I could take a guess, but you know, I just don't know. I'm going to say 50, under 50, somewhere around 50.
I'm sorry?
I really wouldn't be able to guess. I'd just be taking a shot at $50,000.
Okay, so we know it's going to be less than 100 and more than zero, and would it be appropriate to ask if the citizen has any ideas on what that might cost? He's been doing the research on it.
Mr. Sorrentino, please come to the microphone.
My recollection is if you go through the documents when this was brought up for a vote, there was like 155 pages of reference, and down somewhere in page 142 or something, there was a basic price for 50-30 lighting, which was from $275,000 to $325,000. To upgrade the lights to 70-50 was an additional $117,000. That would be the next. There was also a number in there that indicated upgrading the infrastructure, which is the electrical service and the additional pole strength, and that number, I recall, was around $34,000. If we go back and refer to that document somehow, which I probably should have done tonight, I didn't do it, but those numbers were estimates, and they were put into that reference for you guys when you voted on it last time on the keeping of the ballpark. That's my recollection for whatever it's worth.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
But to answer your questions, about in the neighborhood of $34,000.
And if I may ask one more question. If we do this infrastructure upgrade and we decide at a future date then to go to the 70-50, is it just a matter of adding more luminaires? In other words, would we continue to use the ones we have and just add additional lights? Or would we have to trash the existing luminaires and put up different ones totally?
No, that's the whole point. That's why you want to do something now. If you put in the system that's proposed now and you want to upgrade it, you'd have to do something like that. The poles may not be strong enough to hold the additional luminaires, and the electrical service may not be sufficient to power the lights.
But my question is, the light fixtures themselves, the individual 60-some light fixtures themselves, they would still be used, it would just be a matter of adding more of them?
Yes, adding more of them and re-aiming them.
Yeah.
And of course, the new system that's proposed is, what do you call them, LEDs? They're LEDs, which is a new system, and it requires less luminaires than the older metal halide system. But that's the whole point, is to put in a system that if it's found to be insufficient, you can add to it and upgrade the lights. In addition, you can put systems of control in there that vary the light illumination at night by shutting off half the lights or shutting off two-thirds of them. You can provide controls in there that just put part of them in service at a time, or all of them.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you. What is the current level of illumination on the field?
Well, it's way less than 50-30 because we have fixtures that are out right now, and as I've mentioned, they're 40 years old, so they're not at any standard that meets 50-30.
And are you saying that if we were to have the 50-30, that's not sufficient for collegiate play?
That is not sufficient for collegiate play because the recommendation is 70-50. So we've designed those lights to our current usage, so the decision is based on budget. The current usage, which is a recreational men's league and freshman high school baseball, the recommendation for those two leagues is 50-30. The time available on the field may in the future be able to accommodate collegiate ball, but right now, we don't accommodate all the users that request to use the baseball field. Plus, we're cutting down the time that they're going to, baseball's going to be played on the field in the fall, if you remember, because it's now a multipurpose field. So some of the recreational league criteria that they look at are the types of bats used, the ball speed. And 80% of the fields nationwide are lit to 50-30, if that gives you some basis for the recommendation that's in the specifications.
Thank you.
Additional questions from council? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we look at the motion that is to be made, there's an indication of a contingency amount of $341,560, which would bring the total to like 5.4 million and change. But when I look at the summary of the cost study report, that includes all the contingencies in there, it's showing a total cost of $5,387,000. So there's about a $24,000 difference between what is proposed and what we're approving. I'm just trying to figure that out as to where that comes from.
Well, the contractor, I need to get to the sheet you're looking at. Is that page five, the final?
Yeah, so in the recommended motion, it talks about a contingency amount of $341,560.
Let me get to where you're at in the motion.
Correct.
$5,69,979 and the contingency of 341. So I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
So that equates to $5,411,539. But if we look at the project costs in the submitted cost report, it indicates that the, like, I think it's down on, let's see here, if I'm looking at the right page. the, like, I think it's down on, let's see here, if I'm looking at the right page.
If I can...
On attachment two, it says, total cost is $5,387,394.
Attachment two.
That's on the first summary page of attachment two.
So that summary report, and I'm going to have Martha come up if I'm not answering this clearly, the summary report was dated August 17th, and from that summary report, we went through a value engineering exercise twice to go through the scope of each of the subcontractors' work until we could get the project within a reasonable budget, not at the 5/3. The contingency that you're seeing in the motion is the owner's contingency to deal with issues that come up once construction begins.
But the, in the, the base price, it already has design contingency, estimated contingencies, the construction contingencies.
So those belong to, when I presented to you the architect's conceptual plans, they had a design allowance or contingency in there based on the budget they were projecting, and that was true for both the architect and the landscape architect. So they were allowances in case their budget estimates did not come in at the proposed amount, which they did not, once the subcontractors' bids were accumulated and tabbed and scope was reviewed. So that's what those are. Then we have the owner's contingency. So those have basically been spent, the numbers you're looking at, and are included in the $5 million.
Okay. But then, as we, sort of a related matter, when you're talking about the, the overall cost, when you look at the next item that we're considering, it shows that on August 9th, they had these costs already figured at, what was it? Trying to, lost my numbers here, but I'm just trying to balance the numbers that were presented on August 9th in the next item that we're considering, which is, what is that number?
$165,000.
Right, there's about $165,000 difference between those. And so I'm just trying to figure out where that difference came from.
And August 9th is on what page? What number are you looking at?
It's the very last page, page of our packet.
Oh, August 29th?
No, the very last page, not on this item, but the next item we're considering.
Oh, the Barker.
The Barker, Rinker, Sea Cat, the next item is for construction services from the architect and landscape architect. That is coming out of the 2E budget as a separate line item, because the 2E budget is over really $6 million. This amount of the $5,069 is for construction contract services to GH PIPs.
Well, but I understand the differences between two items, but in the, the second item, the total project costs are $5,55,564.
For construction.
Right, and then we have $5,411,000 all in for this, so is there an additional $411,000 in design costs in that, in the one that we're currently considering?
No.
The difference is the $341,560. That's, as Ms. Manuary mentioned, that's the owner's contingency, the city's. So if anything above the contract, if there's issues with the project that, that we need additional money for, that's what it's for. It's not, it's not a contingency for the contractor, it's for the city.
So we have two contingencies then, one for them and one for us, and we're adding that together?
We're, we're, no, the 350, the 341 does not get, it's not at part of their contract. The contract is at that $5 million, that's the guaranteed maximum price, the $5,69,000. The $341,560, we're asking for you to approve out of the 2E budget as a contingency for the city if something comes up. Joyce might have examples of, if something comes up during the construction.
It's a construction contingency. If we find something, oftentimes, it's maybe soil, soil-related. That's what that contingency is for. It's not the contractor's responsibility. For example, I'll just use when we constructed the recreation center, we had a contingency for the owner. The soil testing that was done did not indicate that we needed 22-foot caissons, 50 of them. That came out of the owner's contingency.
Sure, but when we look at the actual summary here, that there's line items for contingency that, is that, it seems like that would be doubled then.
That's for the construction contingent. It's, there's two, two line items for two different contingencies, but one, one's for the construction contract and one is for the owners. If there's something that comes up during the project that, that, you know, that's unforeseen, above contract contingency. If it, and Joyce told me many times, I hope we don't have to spend it because she has many other projects she would like to spend it on, but it will be there in case something comes up, so it doesn't delay the project.
Okay, I'll yield the floor. Thank you. Additional questions for staff? Mr. Pond.
I'm jumping around the document, sorry, I want to get back. Can you bring up the site plan again? Two questions. You referred to the creek access a couple of times. I see the West Creek Access as an ad alt, but you actually pointed, is that considered the west? I see.
The west.
That's the west, and so that's in the contract?
That is in the, that is in the contract, correct.
Okay, so it was an approved alternate, or the alternate D is mislabeled, it should be East Creek Access?
Well, there's two small creek accesses. One is here, and they are not considered alternates. If they're an alternate, they'll be listed like this one that says bid alt.
So the West Creek, the alternate D, West Creek Access is where?
It's, well, it is mislabeled, it's this one.
That's the east?
Yes.
Or maybe I don't know which direction I'm looking at.
No, you're right, you're correct.
Okay.
This is the one that has been eliminated over here on the east.
Okay, so that's just, in the summary, the alternate was really East Creek Access, not, not West. As you were going through, I know you were trying to balance down to the budget and, and you're, you're filling back with some other funds, just wondering, was, was the Parks and Recreation Commission or anyone else involved in determining whether or not you would try to buy in any of these ad alternates, or how were you, how were you trying to balance that with, with these other funds?
So I heard two questions?
Yep.
Okay. The Park and Recreation Commission was not involved in the detail of this analysis and trying to reach budget. Our original budget number was...
4.4.
Well, I think when we added, well, that's the 2E bond money, but our original budget number, we're about $14,000 over the original budget number that we came to a working budget number during pre-construction services, based on the pricing we were receiving. And then your second question was...
No, that, that covers the two questions. Because the first one was whether or not the Parks and Rec was, was involved in it. And so, and I think you've already answered how you came to the 50/30 specification, so I'll let that go.
Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As it relates to the, the lighting issue, I, I think that planning ahead for an upgrade would be a prudent move and would be a less difficult to ask, to make as it relates to seeing that this construction project would at least allow for additional lighting down the road. And so I'm not sure the best way to amend this, but I would like to make a motion to amend this contract to allow for the...
We don't have a, we don't have a motion on the...
Okay, well, I, I won't make the motion quite yet, but just in general terms, I think it's appropriate to at least allow us that room down the road to provide additional lighting to the ball field as opposed to actually upgrading right now to that 70/50 lighting, and that would be a good middle-of-the-road approach to at least allowing the competitive play to occur down the road if we're able to either find the money to enhance the lighting or otherwise. But as it's currently situated, when we install this 50/30 lighting, we won't be able to upgrade at all. So that would be my request, is that we at least consider leaving us room down the road to upgrade.
Thank you. Is there additional discussion, questions for council, of council, of, from council? Ms. Davis.
So I just have a question, because I know you've been working on this, and thank you, because I know you've made changes along the way. If, for instance, so we go to Mr. Orcott and Mr. Sorrentino, and we say, put your money where your mouth is and get us the $35,000, you know, I mean, they've said to us previously, hey, we'll talk to people, we'll get, we'll see if we can get the money, we'll, you know, we'll scramble whatever. I mean, what, I guess, what would it take? I mean, if we approved that today and we said, we challenged them, hey, put your money where your mouth is, you've been telling us this for, you know, three or four months now, that, you know, you might be able to get the support, you might be able to get whatever for us to make this upgrade. Is that possible? Is there a way to do that? Or would we have to do that as a part of the contingency? I mean, I'm, I, I'm going to tell you, I feel, I'm very mixed about this because I wanted the baseball field from the beginning, but now I kind of feel like give an inch and take a mile, that it's like, okay, we got, we saved the baseball field, but now you're taking our neighborhood baseball field that's already filled, that's already booked by people, and now you're saying, well, let's make it collegiate. So now we're saying, okay, so now, all those people that came in and said, please save our field, I play baseball there, are we going to be bumping those people for collegiate ball and those types of things? So I have very mixed emotions about it. I do feel, I, I would rather be able to upgrade it so that if it happens, we can do it, but I almost, and, and I'm not sure how council feels, but I almost want to put it on them and say, have Ms. Manuary get us whatever it would cost for the difference, and if their group and their contacts can provide that dollars for upgrades, then I'm guessing you probably would have no problem with that. But I'm, I'm thinking it's more about the budget, and you had to cut and, cut and paste and cut and cut and cut, and it's like, I'm done cutting. 80% of the community baseball fields out there have this lighting, they're not collegiate. You know, again, give an inch, you're trying to take a mile, and it's kind of like, now we're done. And, and that's, and, and again, I've been big proponents of them, that's kind of where I am. It's like, okay, we've had the baseball field that served a certain community, we're bringing lights in that will be better even than what we've had before. We've already been told the baseball field is booked, so now we're planning on putting lighting in that's a higher level to even bring in more people, which is good, yay, if ever a league leaves or something, at least we have the option. But I almost want to put it back to them and say, bring us the money, or the sponsorship, or whomever. That's, and, and so I guess my question to you is, would that be reasonable, feasible? What do you think?
Well, I would think if they can raise the money to do that, we could make that happen. You know, we do have the Wheat Ridge Foundation that takes tax-deductible donations. Timing-wise, I don't know how long it would take them to do that and how that would fit into the construction schedule. And then again, I just would reiterate the point, we're, we're lighting the ball field for our current usage, and we don't meet demand now. So I think whether collegiate ball would actually use that field moving forward, it would be based on a program decision.
Ms. Hobbie.
Thank you, Joyce, for all your work on this. And so I just am asking for a little bit of clarification. As I understand it, we spent the money, the extra half a million dollars to have new lighting and have removable fences so that we could attempt to have a multi-use field some of the time. And one of those times when we decided it would be multi-use is in the fall. And so in the fall, we are cutting back the balance of how much baseball can use it so that those other sports who are asking for a multi-use field can use it more during that time? Is that true?
I, yes, I, I, I believe so. There's only so many hours of program time on the baseball field.
So I get, what, I guess my point is that I, I'm, no, no more money, not more lights. In the first place, I think it should have been a multi-use field for everybody. So here we have our baseball field, and if we're, if we put in the lights and they, we build it and then they come and the collegiate comes, then it's no longer a multi-use field anymore. And so then, where'd our compromise go? Straight down the drain. So that's where I stand with the more money and a postponement. We've been dragging our feet on this project and have had staff bring it in, and bring it in, and bring it in. It's time to move forward.
Additional comments from staff or from council? Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I know in the original discussions, at some point in time, we talked about the Carnation Festival and other festivals that we may hold out there, maybe wanting lighting west of the ball field towards the building and, and the parking lots and what have you. Have we discussed that at all with people that, be it 2020 or, or the Carnation Festival Committee, to see if they could appreciably use some extra lights, if not today, in the future?
I did discuss that with the Carnation Festival Chairman. I did not discuss it with Wheat Ridge 2020. They currently tend to use 38th Avenue as opposed to Anderson Park, but what I was told by Mr. Demont was that they really, the baseball lights themselves are fine, and the additional, and the lighting on the building, which is being upgraded, serves their use, and that they really don't like to turn the lights on during the festival. It's too much.
Thank, thank you. Ms. Manuary, I had a question for you. If, would, would an increase in the lumens from, from the 50 to the 70 create any influence on the neighbors, neighborhood, other people that...
Well, it will be brighter, definitely, but with the new LED lighting and the progress they've made in technology, the neighbors will actual, actually probably experience less than they notice in terms of light pollution in the lights we have there today, because the systems are so much better.
Thank you. Do we have additional? Mr. Fitzgerald.
I just have a comment. We need to remember that we're building this for the Wheat Ridge community, and the baseball, the collegiate baseball is not primarily a Wheat Ridge city function. So, you know, my, my thought is, this is all about us. It's all about Wheat Ridge.
Mr. Matthews.
Well, I'm reminded that a lot of the festivities that we pay for now don't just exclusively consist of having Wheat Ridge people here. Part of the idea is to create a destination, as of, for instance, the bike race. I'd be surprised if anything over 3% of those bicycle riders reside in Wheat Ridge, but yet we create something to bring attention to our city, not just within our city, but to bring in attention from the outside. And that's why I believe that in the long scope, and I can't prove it, I don't know, but that's the same basic consideration for what we do with Wheat Ridge 2020 is we're trying to advertise, not just satisfy our local people, but advertise with events like that, the fact that Wheat Ridge is here and people need to consider us as a viable place to move to.
Before I close the discussion and move to a motion, is there any more questions? Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you. So my thoughts on this issue is that we have delayed this project. I was a part of this project from the very beginning, and I think that we compromised in allowing the baseball field to stay at the sacrifice of other priorities that our community input had placed above the baseball field. The 30/50 lighting seems to be adequate for the current usage. We've added some lights, we're going to be updating them to LEDs. I think we are just kind of hounding out this potential future and potential uses, and when really, like, we, we need to break ground on this as soon as possible, because we can't delay this, because then we may not have a 50th Carnation Festival at Anderson Park. So I'm ready to move forward with this.
Are there any more questions of staff?
I just have one question.
Ms. Davis.
So if they had to raise the money, when they'd have to raise it by? Give me a drop-dead...
date.
Oh, if, if you'd like to.
She's, she's just coming, and we don't, we would need to check the schedule, but I'm going to say, I'm going to say, December.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman, a motion is in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 56-2018, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2018 2E bond fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $2,129,250, and to award a contract and subsequent payments to GH Phipps Construction Companies in the amount of $5,069,979, and to approve a contingency amount of $341,560 for the Anderson Park renovation 2E bond project.
Second.
We have a motion, and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Urban.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, as it relates to this, I'd like to make a motion to allow the exterior lighting to be upgraded in the future, to allow 70/50 lighting at a cost not to exceed $45,000. Yes, just a substitute, or not really a substitute, but an amendment. Amendment, not, at a cost not to exceed $45,000.
Do we have a second? We have an amendment on the table to the motion. Is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
We have a, we have a motion, or an amendment, an amended motion with a second. We will discuss the amendment. Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. I, I heard the comment made by Councilman Hoppe that, you know, if you build it, they will come. I'm reminded of a past life in another house where I put in a sprinkler system, and once in a while, I fall down, I hit my head, and I get stars and get a great idea. In each control box, I put in an extra, an, an extra zone, and just had it dead end there, but the valve, the wiring, everything was in place. Within two years, all three zones were in use. For, I, I guess, the process can be, the, the concept can be used in a lot of places, but for this particular instance, if there ever is, even if we never go to 50, 70/50 lighting, if there, we decide there is a need in the future to try and get some more illumination outside the field, because keep in mind, if the engineers are as good as they say, there's not going to be a lot of leakage off that field, perhaps it may be a wise decision to build it and see what comes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pond.
I'll just reiterate a couple of comments that were already raised. I don't, you know, I appreciate all the passion behind there. I'm a little less appreciative of how much we've talked about this and, and how it's going around. I'm not, I don't support this for really repeating some of the, the things that Councilmen Hoppe and Davis have stated. Largely, I think we've maxed out. This is a great improvement. We've made a great compromise. And frankly, I think the request to kind of get to a collegiate level, in my mind, does start to call the question, the actual, you know, the efforts we made to, to, to make this a multi-use field with adjustability. And, and honestly, I would say if we, if we even could accommodate that type of, of play, we would be bumping people who are using the field now, and we would likely be abandoning the concept of the flexibility because I can't imagine that that would be acceptable for that competitive level of play. So, for those reasons, I, I won't vote for this.
Additional discussion on the motion, on the amendment, pardon me. Okay, we have no more discussion. We have, I would like to schedule a vote on the amendment, and do we have clarity on what the amendment is? The amendment is to, do we have, somebody, somebody read back what the amendment is, please.
I amend the motion to allow for the upgrade to 70/50 lighting with the not-to-exceed budget of $45,000.
Okay. Will the deputy clerk please poll the council on the amendment?
Motion fails five to two.
Okay, we are back to the original motion.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a different amendment?
You, you may, you may.
I would like to actually make an amendment that if our baseball advocates are able to raise the monies by December, that we allow them to provide those monies to Ms. Manwary and this project to upgrade the lighting, but it would be monies that our baseball advocates and, and those, those groups would be providing, and it would not be city dollars.
Would this be on or before December 1st, 2018?
Yes.
Thank you. So, there is amendment to, to that effect. Is there a second on the amendment? So, we have an amendment to allow the baseball community to come up with funds to do this by December 1st, 2018, and we have a second. We have discussion on the amendment. Mr. Urban.
Just for clarification, is this monies to allow the lighting to go to 70/50 today, or is it money to allow the upgrade to occur in the future? Do we know?
Ms. Davis.
I would probably say, if they can pull in, you know, whatever monies they're able to, I would say. So, because it's my understanding that you could always shut it to the 50/30 or whatever, 50/30.
I'm, I'm going to say it needs to stay for the upgrades, based on the construction schedule and the ordering of fixtures and poles. That.
Mr. Pond.
Yeah, I'll, I'll also vote no on this one, and largely because, again, going back to the purpose of the compromise that we made, I, I wouldn't want to get ourselves into a situation where we're actually beholden by now, you know, fiduciary contribution to the project to actually change our rental strategy to, to the field. Now, if someone could promise me that that wouldn't be the case, which you cannot tonight, maybe I would change my mind, but I will vote no.
Additional discussion on the amendment. Ms. Hoppe.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Pond, and I'll be voting no on it also because, again, we worked very hard to come up with the compromise so that we could accommodate youth sports in our community, and, and so, to get us, ourselves into a position where we feel obligated to allow this other level of play to come in and bump our youth sports, I'm, I'm not comfortable with that.
Mr. Additional discussion on the amendment. Ms. Davis.
Mr. Dahl, is there a way that we could create something that doesn't show that we're held, you know, committed to, you know, a certain group because they did help donate to this project? I guess, I guess, you know, I, I could see what Mr. Pond's saying is that if Collegiate Football USA comes in and gives us, let's pretend, the money, and then they say, "Well, wait a minute, we gave you the money, so now we want X amount of time on the field." Is there a way that we would be able to establish that there's no obligation with that donation?
Well, there, there probably wouldn't be a legal obligation. The real issue is political obligation, and, you know, that's in your good judgment, not mine, but, you know, you, you, you certainly say, you know, the receipt of this money does not obligate the city to change its rental policies on the field. And you say that, and, and then it's, it's, you're not obligated to change the rental policies, but you, you, you also don't want to, you know, put yourself in the, what I, I think that probably does is it limits you politically then when you're asked to change them, as you likely will be, because of the, of the capabilities of the field. You'll be asked, you know, to, so it's really, I hate to defer it back to you, but it's really a political question. You can deal with it legally and say there's no legal obligation, but that does not, if you, what you're saying, that does not prevent people from coming in and saying, "Your field has this capability, and we would like you to, to, to rent it for that purpose." And that's, as Joyce says, a program decision which only you can make. So, you, you can't insulate yourself from those future program decisions by some legal mechanism. You'll, you'll have those decisions to make, and, and, you know, I, in whatever way you want to make them.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, further discussion on the motion, on the amendment? Seeing none, will the deputy clerk please poll the council on the amendment?
Motion fails four to three.
Thank you. We're back to the main motion. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you very much. We will move to item number three on our agenda. Ms. Davis, would you please introduce item number three?
Thank you. A motion to award contract and subsequent payments to Barker, Rinker, SeaCat Architecture in the amount of $165,717 for Anderson Park improvements, construction, administrative services. The issue, the scope of this contract award includes construction services for renovating the existing Anderson Building and bathhouse, as well as the existing Anderson Park. Per the adopted Anderson Park master plan, the renovation of Anderson Park is one of the four projects approved by voters through 2E bond issues, investing for the future in November 2016. The improvements associated with this project are intended to provide updated park and recreation facilities that function effectively for current users, address future design trends, as well as provide increased maintenance efficiencies.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a, a staff presentation on this?
Just if there's questions.
Okay.
I don't have anything to add.
Very, very good. We don't have any presentation. Does council have questions that they would like to direct to staff on this matter? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we're looking at the, the fee that is to be charged, it indicates that it's based on the budget as of July 20, 2018. It says, "Our fees are based on the 100% construction documents dated July 20, 2018." What is the, is the fee based on the amount that we just approved, or is it a previous amount that was done prior to the value engineering? And how do we determine which?
I asked the consultants to present a scope of work that was based on tasks only, not a percentage of the construction dollars, but the actual hours that they felt were needed to attend project meetings, review submittals, review change orders, review pay applications, not a percentage of the construction contract. So, they're really talking about the 100% construction drawings that were submitted and the tasks associated with those, not a percentage of the cost of construction.
So, are, are we approving this hours and, and fee schedule relating to the, the tasks, or are we approving that percentage fee?
You are approving the amount associated with the hours and tasks represented in their scope of work.
And, but isn't that the same as, isn't the 163,00317 equal to the, the budget amount as well? Like, the, because it says that?
We're approving $163,000 for a consultant contract.
But, so it's not a, it's no longer a percentage fee then?
No.
This is a separate fee for construction administration, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Are there additional questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Oh, wait, I didn't do a motion.
Oh. Well, I guess, I guess then, I guess then we'll do a motion. Thank you very much.
I can make up anything.
Ms. Davis, would you?
I move to award contract and subsequent payments to Barker, Rinker, SeaCat Architecture in the amount of $165,717 for Anderson Park Improvement, Construction, Administrative Services.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's discuss the motion. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the deputy clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manwary. Okay, that concludes our action items on the agenda tonight. We will move now to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few items. You all should have received your proposed 2019 budget on Friday evening. If you did not get it, please let us know. Some, some of you, we just dropped it off at your front door. The budget is available for review by anybody that would like to on our city's website, and also at the city clerk's office if you want to come in and look at a hard copy. We're scheduled to review the budget with city council on September 17th, that study session. So, if you have any questions before then, please get with us, and we'd be happy to, to meet with you separately. The city's going to have a Tabor question on the ballot this year, asking voters to allow the city to retain about $457,000 in excess revenues from the 2016 2E ballot question. A Tabor notice will be sent out to all registered electors concerning this ballot question, and the Tabor notice may include a pro and con statement. The city clerk's office is, will be accepting those statements from the public until 5:00 PM on Monday, September 17th. So, if you'd like to submit those, you can. Anderson Park, as we just, just spoke about, groundbreaking is scheduled for September 19th at, or demolition day is what we're calling it, demo day, scheduled for September 19th at 10:30. So, come on out to Anderson Park if you'd like to participate in that. And you may have seen something out on social media that Tokyo Joe's was going to open tomorrow. They had to postpone that, and they're hoping it's going to be Friday, this Friday. So, it won't be tomorrow, but Tokyo Joe's is hoping to open on Friday at 38th and Wad's at the Wheat Ridge Corners Project.
Very good. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. City Attorney's Matters, Mr. Dahl.
Not a thing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will go to elected officials' matters. Mr. Matthews.
Not tonight, thank you.
Ms. Dozeman.
I just had a quick question. Will the Anderson Park be open during construction?
She left me. You know, I, I'm, I'm not sure if I can answer that fully. It's, it's going to be done in phases, so let me check on that, and I'll, I'll get an email out, and we'll make sure there's stuff on the website.
Okay, thank you. And then, my actual elected officials' matter is, the Farmers 5000 is this Sunday. Kristy Davis and I will be jogging it. We'll see how well I do, but I just wanted to welcome the community, and I hope to see everybody out there.
Thank you. Ms. Davis.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pond.
I just want to thank everyone who attended and helped put on Ridge Fest this weekend. It was a great afternoon and evening, and saw a lot of neighbors and, and friends there. It seemed very active and, and well-attended. So, again, I want to thank Local Works and everyone from our community who went out.
Thank you so much. Ms. Hoppe.
The city treasurer, Jerry DeTulio, asked me to give you some updates on the sales tax revenue reports that have been generated. He has a new one for 44th Avenue. It's from Pierce to Youngfield, the years of 2011 to 2017. Our growth has gone from 2011, 8.9% in sales tax, oh, wait, sorry, that's of the city. So, it's gone from, geez, it's had a 59% increase in that amount of years. So, that's pretty significant. And then he updated the 38th Avenue, which is Sheridan to Uppam. There was one line that had 3.5%, and the rest had 3%. Now, all categories are 3%, and our percent change from 2011 to 2017 on 38th from Sheridan to Uppam is 47% increase. So, those are some good news numbers on our sales tax increases, and that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Mr. Urban.
Nothing at night. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald.
I'd like to thank, on behalf of the citizens of Wheat Ridge, Reese's Dental on Wadsworth, just north of 38th, who on this holiday gave free dental services to those who could not afford dental services. to those who could not afford dental services on their own. They had a huge crowd there and I'd like to thank them very much for doing that.
Thank you. Um, I would like to express my appreciation for all the, the folks that helped put on the Ridge Fest and the city staff and, uh, Local Works and the, and the volunteers that came and, and helped put that on. I was, uh, I was there. I thought it was a great, uh, great event. It's really, it's really, uh, it's nice to see things, um, alive happening in your community and that was a very, very well, well thought out and well executed plan. And I would like to remind everyone, if they would like to come and bring their, bring their families to Truck Tuesday, uh, that'll be tomorrow at four o'clock at, uh, here at city council. I suppose we're over in the parking lot by Hayward, Hayward Park. And you can come and, and see all the hardware that, um, some of the big, the big trucks the city's got. And, uh, I'm sure you can crawl around them and, um, and get a lot of good entertainment. So with that, I thank you all for being here and for watching. If you're at home, we will stand adjourned.